I'll call this regular council meeting of the Village of Grammont and Order at 7:30 PM on September the 8th. With us for prayer this evening is Pastor Ruth Fairparker.
Let's pray. Lord, thank you today for this island. Thank you for this beautiful day. Thank you for the rain that we had. And we pray even for protection over this island when it comes to fires. And we thank you for these people and the work that they do. We pray that you would bless them abundantly, that you'd continue to give them wisdom and revelation far beyond what they even have in their mind, and help them to continue to orchestrate the things that need to be done for this island. We commit them to you, and we give you all the praise, for it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick opening remarks tonight. Obviously, as Ruth said in her prayer, we spent a great deal of time in August talking about emergency preparedness and fire preparedness with the wildfire risk that we had on the island. I want to give a shout out in particular to our fire department, who have been, I'm going to say vigilant is probably not the right word, but it's the best one that I've got right now. Particularly that Saturday when we had all this wildfire smoke from Nova Scotia, and they had repeated calls coming in. I know there were a lot of them that were out looking to see what was going on. So, we appreciate them all the time, but certainly over the last month, they've been they've been super diligent. And I also want to give a shout out to the guys who are operating drones looking for fires. They've been doing that diligently over the last month or so, and it's a little bit of comfort, I think, for everybody to know that there has been no smoke spotted before we go to bed at night, if nothing else. Onto regular things. Spent a bit of a busy month. On the 14th, Minister Kennedy, who's the Minister of Local Government, was here. We talked to him a little bit about fiscal reform and some of the challenges of being here in a remote community. On the 20th, we had a joint meeting with the PAC on the rural plan, and we'll talk about that hopefully later on in the agenda. August 28th, the Regional Service Commission passed their draft budget for the 2026 year, and we've got a meeting scheduled on October 2nd with Hollis to come and talk about that budget. And then on the 4th, the premier was here on the island, where we got to talk about some of the ferry challenges, our groundwater study, and some housing projects. So, quite a bit going on for the summer quiet season, that's for sure. Moving on to disclosure of conflict of interest. Hearing none. We'll move on to the adoption of the minutes of August 11th. I just want to make a note that the prayer, Esme has changed it in the minutes, but it didn't get changed from the month before. It was Pastor Dorian Sekou who made the prayer, so we have made that change in the minutes.
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion to adopt the minutes.
You heard the motion from Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Valentine. Question? Counselor Green?
In the building permit section on page four, yeah, four, says the turnaround time for permits approximately two weeks. I believe that was the target, not necessarily the goal that they were achieving. So, I think the minutes should reflect that.
Are you okay with that change?
Yeah.
Counselor Valentine? Okay. Any other question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. Additions to the agenda, we have two. One was under the bylaws, the rural plan. So, that would be 16.1. And other, under old business, we have PAC recommendation, if we can add that, is 9.2.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to set those additions to the agenda.
You heard the motion from Counselor Sturgeon. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. We have no one from the RCMP here this evening, so we will move on to old business, which is 9-1. And that's Synergy, the water survey. Just a little bit of background on that to catch up while everybody's getting their documents. We've been working with Synergy, looking at some of, basically doing a study to determine where the groundwater, where the well water on Grammont and comes from. There'd been a UNB study probably 40 years ago, so to go back, get some of the information from that, reaffirm what's going on, and then also do a public survey was a component that we added later on to look at how many wells have gone dry, particularly given the dry summer that we've had this year. There were a couple of quotes that were circulated a couple of weeks ago, and they were in the agenda packages as well. I don't know if we want to have a conversation about that. The only other thing that I will add is, I had a conversation with Department of Environment last week, which I think I sent an email. They have some interest in talking about this a little bit, and we're trying to set up a meeting with them hopefully next week sometime, just to have a call, to make sure that what we're doing covers what they're looking for as far as a study. If we were to move forward, like to do something that would require an environmental impact assessment or something down the road, just to make sure dotted the i's and crossed the t's. So, with that, I'll open the floor to see if there's any conversation on what we have here in front of us.
Madam Mayor, I see two.
Madam Mayor.
I see two documents from two separate companies. Are they basically doing the same thing, or how does that work?
I think the methodology is different, but I think the outcome, the goal is the same.
So, are we looking to hire both, or?
One or the other.
We have to choose here.
Yes. There were two, I believe, three companies approached and two that we have quotes from.
Thank you.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's what I thought when I wanted to make sure.
Counselor Green?
You mentioned that you've had some conversations with local government or department.
Department of Environment.
Environment.
Yep.
Are they going to cover some of these costs? Are they something that we should be taking into consideration here?
They felt that there could be funding from our DC, and I think that would be part of the conversation that we could have with them next week as well. But we at least have a baseline of what the cost we'd be looking for would be, but they feel that our DC has funded similar type of projects, so.
Okay.
Where are the PIDs that are identified on the funding engineering one? Are they all in North Head?
I think they're more towards the back of the island. They were looking at some, I think, areas in particular that the UNBA study had identified as potential areas where the water had come from, is my understanding. Okay. So, is it the pleasure of the group to choose one tonight? Do we want to have a conversation with Environment next week and table this till the next meeting? Do we have strong feelings about one or the other? I'm just looking for a little bit of direction. Counselor Turner, and then I see Counselor Green leaning forward, and maybe Counselor Valentine, like, okay.
I would like to find out what the possibilities are for funding first.
Yep.
I think it's not enough of a rushed item to go ahead without that.
Counselor Green?
Yeah, I just wouldn't want to jeopardize our conversation with Department of Environment, but when it comes to the two quotes, one being, you know, around $7,000 cheaper than the other, and they're basically the same information, it's probably not much of a decision to make, in my opinion.
Counselor Valentine?
I was wondering, because I can't really tell from reading these, the difference between what one is going to look at and what the other is going to look at. Would it be appropriate to show these to the Department of Environment and see if one of them speaks more to their?
Probably isn't a bad idea to share both of them with them and see what their thoughts are about them.
Okay.
Okay, so, what I'm hearing, Counselor Sturgeon?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to table this item until after we meet with the Department of Environment.
Heard the motion from Counselor Sturgeon. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Greenlaw. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. Okay, 9-2 is the addition, the PAC recommendation.
So, PAC met on November 27th, 2024, on a subdivision approval. And PAC made a recommendation to council to accept the subdivision plan with the conditions of 30-meter buffer, a Wawa permit, and they were going to go, instead of the land for public purpose, like we're doing with the small property, they were going to do cash in lieu of 6%. So, when it got to council on December the 2nd, it was neither accepted nor rejected. There was just a motion to send it to the Bylaw Committee to review Bylaw 2-95. And that was it. It wasn't whether or not they accepted PAC's recommendation. So, this come up today in a conversation with the property owner, because even though the subdivision plan has been accepted, it's been stamped and approved by the Service Commission and the surveyors, it can't get registered until that cash in lieu money exchanges hands. So, that property's just sitting there, and the owners are wondering what's going on. So, I did some digging today and found this, that PAC had made the recommendation, but council didn't actually accept or reject. So, we need to decide tonight whether or not we accept PAC's recommendation for the Miller's Pond subdivision.
I see Counselor Sturgeon.
Could the CEO kind of review what the PAC said again, please?
The Songay survey applied to the PAC for approval for one lot subdivision for a seasonal dwelling. The proposed right-of-way is across the parent PID. A right-of-way agreement will be created by a legal document registered to the proposed lot. SNBSC recommends that the Planning Advisory Committee of the Village of Grammont and approve a private right-of-way for the development of land as shown on Plan Miller Pond subdivision. The final plan of the subdivision must be stamped with the private right-of-way note and 30-meter buffer shown in the following statement must be present on the final plan. This area is subject to Regulation 90-80, Water Course and Wetland Regulation Clean Water Act. Is recommended that the Planning Advisory Committee of the Village of Grammont and recommend to council a sum of money in lieu of land for land for public purpose.
I'll make a motion that we accept the PAC recommendation.
Heard the motion from Counselor Sturgeon. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Question? Counselor Green?
Don't have my notes for that meeting with me, but I can't remember what our concerns were, that we didn't want to accept the recommendation of the PAC the first time it came to us. And the memory's not that good, I guess.
I think if I remember, there was some confusion around how the amount, how the value, the percentage of the land assessment was determined. And I think we got sidetracked, or the conversation was more focused on how we determined the dollar amount versus what the recommendation was, is my recollection of that meeting. The focus was more on the bylaw, why it was written that we would accept money versus land. I don't know. I see some nods over here, like that might have.
That's what I recall, Madam Mayor, so on line, whether it's the property value that is assessed by the province versus what the actual market value was.
My conversation with the planning director today, it's the assessed value, because the provincial assessors are supposed to assess that at what they consider to be a fair market value, even though it probably seems low. But because of where the property is, there was no real significant value for, like, for example, the small property with that land for public purpose. So, the 6% cash in lieu. So, there'd be two options there. They can either do a 6% cash in lieu of the entire property at the assessed value, or they can do 6% cash in lieu for each individually lot that they subdivide.
Their choice?
Counselor Green?
Did I understand you to say it was a one lot, or one acre lots, a number of lots? Is it just one lot?
Currently, right now, it's just a one-acre lot.
Whatever. Let's do the.
Accept the recommendation, get on with it, and if it was 100 acres or 100 lots, we might have a bit more.
I think what they're doing is, they're actually selling some one-acre lots for some of those existing camp owners out there on the pond to purchase, instead of doing the lease like they have been for so many years.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Any other question? Counselor Turner?
The 6%, is that paid, like, as they sell lots?
So, we've actually been holding a check for
We have two checks.
For quite some time. We didn't actually cash them, because we weren't exactly sure what the value was or what the whole product, because this whole subdivision with the land for public purpose and the cash in lieu was so new that we weren't sure. But we got some better clarification from Alex today. I mean, we could, if you want, we could ask, I mean, Alex is here on the call, or we can just go with the motion and. Oh.
Hi, Alex.
Now, I can't see.
Did you have any clarificate? Oh, we're muted. Alex, did you have any clarification you wanted to add?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, so, we briefly talked about it today. And, yeah, it's not, it's not a completely simple topic, but cash in lieu is an alternative to land for public purpose, and council accepts it at its discretion. The typical requirement, if you're creating a new access or a new public street, one or the other, private or public, this requirement kicks in. And as Chris said, you can do it one of two ways as a developer. You can do it by the lot you're subdividing, or you could pay it out for a whole area of land that you're intending to subdivide, and then have that sort of banked for future lots that you're going to create. So, in the case of the small subdivision, they did that. They did one big dedication of land, and they're not going to need to come back to council with additional dedication. So, the cash in lieu versus the LFPP, the actual dedication of land, is a decision. But when you actually come down to the, what amount you accept, then there's a bit of a head-scratcher. The subdivision bylaw was written in 1995, and this cash in lieu clause was in there since then. As Chris said, it's not always been enforced in the same way in its history, and so we need to enforce it. It's on the books. But when we go back to the language, it's vague onto, you know, market value, assessed value, and is that the same thing? So, one thing which we hope would address this is the rural plan. The rural plan update actually provides some clarity to say it's assessed value, the council will accept. And, but that said, this number, this cash in lieu amount, the figure, is a completely discretionary amount from council. Essentially, if you believe this is the 6% of the value of the land being subdivided, then council accepts it. You motion to approve that, that can be accepted, and, you know, the development carries on. So, at this point, there really is no guidance to council. What is 6%? So, I think we've suggested the assessed value, because it's a little bit more definitive than trying to determine a market value. So, but, yeah, going forward, we would suggest using that, and that would be in the rural plan draft that you have in your agenda tonight.
Thanks, Alex. Any other question? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. Next up is a 10-minute open session. We will move on to new business. 14-1 is the Planning Advisory Committee member resignation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Since our last meeting, we've had another member resign from the PAC. So, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank Dwayne Griffin for his time on the committee, very valuable input, and he'll be missed on that position. So, that does leave us with a vacant seat. We did have some recommendations for some possible replacements when we were talking about Tam's replacement at the meeting before. So, I'm not sure what the wish of council is, if we want to go back and review those recommendations, or if my memory serves, which isn't very good, I think we had a couple recommendations when we went to fill Tam, like one and the two. So, I don't know if we want to go, since we used our first one, we want to go to our second recommendation for Dwayne's replacement, or?
And Tam has also said that she would like to come back.
And Tam wants to come back.
Yeah, she was trying to accommodate her employer, and by working on Wednesdays, which meant she couldn't be on PAC anymore, and then her employer's needs changed. So, she can be on PAC, and she'd be happy to come back.
So, which is the group? Counselor Green?
Just delving into a personnel matter that probably would be best dealt with without the camera and the public here in closed session.
So, would you like to make a motion to move that into closed session?
Yes, please. I'd make that motion.
You heard the motion from Counselor Green. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Valentine. Question?
There's one question.
Counselor Sturgeon?
So, we, do we make a motion to accept Mr. Griffin's resignation, or is that we just accept him as good enough?
I can't remember if we, I think we just, I think it's just accepted. I mean, it's not like we've enslaved him. We can't force him to keep coming.
You can't make a mistake. I understand that.
Yeah. Appreciate that. Okay, any other question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. 14-2 is a fall meeting schedule. I wanted to make a suggestion, just because I always feel in the fall, like, it's almost like a new year, you're starting over, and it's time to, you know, summer's over, get back to school, back to work, or whatever. I'd like to try doing a committee of the whole meeting every, once a month, but in the two weeks after council, so between the council meetings, so that we don't have quite as long in between when we have conversations as a group. I'd like to put it on the calendar and just have it as like a standing, we're going to try to do this. I would suggest Tuesday night, because selfishly, I travel on Mondays, and I know it's, sometimes it's easier if we meet in the evenings, if we meet a little bit earlier in the evenings, like, if we want to start at 6:30. So, if we could do, like, Tuesday night at 6:30 on the second week after our regular council meeting, and then just review some of the projects that we've had ongoing, see what needs to be done, and sort of delve off some of that committee work, and see if we can sort of refocus for the next six or seven or eight months, whatever we have left in this term. So, any comments or objections to that sort of process? All right. You guys are agreeable. Thank you. 14-3 is recycling update. Counselor Valentine?
Thank you. So, when I was preparing for this, there was more material than I realized, and so I'm going to be about half an hour. Kidding.
Like, let me get my coffee out.
I'm going to be five minutes, and it's all good news. So, this program began at the end of May, and since then, which is just a little over three months, three and a bit months, almost 300 bins have been picked up, which is almost 25% of the households on the island, which is really good for a brand-new program that a lot of people on the island seem to be opposed to, for reasons that are not clear.
How do you really feel about that?
So, since, we've had seven curbside pickups, with a lot of people also taking their own material to the transfer station, because they're going there anyway. And we've had four trips in the packer truck to the mainland. So, the very first trip, there was about 500 pounds of material that was picked up. The second trip, I'm not sure this number is right, but I think it was about 720 pounds. The third trip was over 1,200, and the last one was 1,950 pounds. So, that is amazing. That's really amazing. And Chris had a picture of the last pickup. So, 1,950 pounds of recyclable material is a lot, because we're not talking about heavy glass, we're talking about paper and light plastics. And so, I don't know, it would fill about half this room, wouldn't it?
It would. It was hard to see, because you don't really have a reference point of that pile sitting in this big warehouse, but we've got to get Anthony to go out and stand next to the pile, so you can kind of get a reference of size. But you're right, it was a massive pile. Really was.
Yeah, so, it's, and the school is now on side, and they're going to focus on recycling paper, and so that, I think, will add a lot to it. And I think that because the grade-two teachers seem to be quite keen on the program, I think there's going to be lots of little kids going home and saying, "Mommy, don't put that in the garbage." So, we are keeping a lot out of the landfill. We're saving on what we would otherwise pay to truck that stuff to the landfill, and we're getting paid quite well to do this, both the pickups and the transfer to the mainland. So, it covers our costs, and it lets us put some money aside to replace the truck, for example, if it's going to need replacements. I was curious about how much actually really gets recycled, because I know there's a lot of suspicions about, they just pick it up and it ends up in the landfill anyway. And the answer is pretty good news. So, plastic, no, paper and cardboard and metal, the amount that gets recycled is almost 100%, unless the material is so soiled that it has to be taken out of the stream. Hard plastic isn't quite that good, but it's not bad. And soft plastic, which we're not recycling yet on the island, it's difficult to recycle it. But of the stuff that we pick up, most of it, almost 100% of it is getting recycled, which is really, so this is a good news story all around. And that's the end of my report.
It's a very fast half hour. I will say the numbers are what struck me, like, when I'd come in and get the numbers every month, I was amazed at how much it had grown since the first month. And I saw pictures of, it must have been the grade-two class, like, of them each on the other side of, like, the blue tub, taking it out for recycle pickup day on Thursday, which, I have to say, it was pretty cute to see them involved in the program. So, any other comments or questions for Counselor Valentine? Okay. Moving along, we're up to 16-1, which is the rural plan. Alex, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Sorry about that. Yeah, so, council, you have in your package tonight a draft rural plan. So, this is a process that's really kind of got underway in October of last year, so we're almost a year into this update. And it's, you guys haven't rushed anything. It's been a process to make sure council and PAC are really, you know, your concerns are reflective in this. But you're not done yet, so the next steps would be to ask the public's feedback on this draft. So, it still could be changed yet further, and that's all part of the process. So, if you look at the current form of the document, you have in there a number of changes that that, like I said, reflect some of those meetings that we've had, the joint meeting between council and PAC, that occurred actually twice. And it's kind of an unprecedented thing to have a council and PAC meet in the same room to go over a document, but I think it just shows how much you guys are really pressing in to make sure this document represents Grammonan and the best interests of the community. So, you see in there a number of changes, and the latest one would be around the hobby farm, to make sure that those standards are, that make sense. And so, those have been included most recently. What you basically have now is to put it back to the PAC, because they have a substantially changed document, and they've given you a view on it, I believe, once. And so, you need to ask them again formally to complete the process, and they need to give you another view, because they're dealing with so many different changes to the document. But now, we also need to call for a public hearing of objections. And a public hearing of objections is a formal process under the Community Planning Act, where the public are invited to see the document and give their opinion on it. So, we could do a number of things with that. So, if council wants to do that in a special meeting ahead of the regular meeting, that could be something that's done, it could be done on a separate night. In addition, we could also have something where we do like a public information session, where it's a little bit more casual, where we have maps on the wall, and then we talk about the different changes, so people can get a little bit more understanding of what changed versus the 2022 draft and this update. So, you could call for a public hearing of objections, and you could also direct staff, planning staff would attend, and help organize this, and be there to answer questions, and have a separate public information night. So, that's not formally put forward to you as a motion, but it's an option to council if you wish to direct it. It's completely voluntary to do that. You legally just have to do the public hearing of objections. But yeah, those two steps, plus a first reading, gets it on the docket, essentially. It's not saying you're going to adopt the bylaw, it's just to say that this is a draft that council's considering. It's not just a staff-edited document, or a document put forward by staff, it's a first draft, so to speak, a rough draft. So, those would be the three motions we'd recommend as a basic, send to PAC for a written view, call for a date of public hearing of objections, need a minimum of 21 days, and then do the first reading. And in addition, you could direct staff, village staff and commission staff, to set up a public information night, if you so choose, that's an option. So, three, possibly four, actions.
Questions for Alex? Council Green, and then Council Sturgeon?
Hi, Alex. Is it possible for us to get a map that we can actually expand and look at individual properties? The one that's attached to the rural plan, it doesn't cooperate when you blow it up.
Yeah, for sure. Two ways we can do that. We have a digital map, that we can make sure everybody has access to that. So, that could be available with the public hearing notification. And then, secondly, we could just get you guys some big printed copies.
Well, if we're going to have a public meeting, I think the big copies would be ideal for, you know, group discussion-type of an event.
Okay.
Counselors, Council Sturgeon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Alex, I assume public hearings, it's got to be given 21 days, a minimum of 21 days of the time the motion is made, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have?
I believe the link to that online map went out with that final draft of the rural plan as well, should be in an email.
There were three attachments. One was the rural plan, one was the list of changes, and the third one, it couldn't open, but it was only 53 kilobytes or something, so it wouldn't have been a map, I don't think.
But I think there was a hyperlink in the body of the email that possibly, I could stand...
Can resend that.
...to corrected.
We will resend that maybe one way or another, just so we have it digitally as well, and we'll see about getting a large map. Are there thoughts on doing an information night in addition to the public hearing? Public hearing of objections?
Yeah.
We have an information night, because otherwise, people are going to be blowing it up on Facebook. So, my, I was just looking at the email, and so, at the very end of the rural plan, there is a map, and you can blow it out. It's not a separate attachment, but it is at the very page 68 or something of the rural plan.
Okay, so, do we want to look at dates to have an information session? I'm just thinking we should, of Alex's list of four things, start knocking them off the easiest at, I mean, I think it makes sense to have the information session well ahead of the notice of objections, whatever, public hearing of objections, I'm going to get that title right. So, do we have any thoughts on when we want to do that? Council Sturgeon?
Madam Mayor, I was wondering if there's anything that would prevent us from at least sending this to the PAC this evening, and then get that ball rolling, and then go from there.
Is that a motion to send the draft rural plan to the PAC?
That is correct, Madam Mayor, yes.
Okay, you heard the motion from Council Sturgeon. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by Council Green Law. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. So then, we need to do, set a date for a public info. Do we have a particular time we want to do that?
Madam Mayor, would we have to hear word back from PAC before we could do that? Or, Alex, any word on that?
You don't have to. When PAC gives a view to council, it's their own view.
Okay.
They're not really to consult with the public, council's the one to consult with the public.
Okay, so, we could set, in theory, set a motion tonight to set aside a public hearing for at least 21 days from tonight, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
This would be an afternoon-evening thing, meeting, just for those at work and stuff.
I would think an evening session would be...
Just an evening?
Yeah.
Or a couple sessions, one in the afternoon for some people, then another one in the evening.
I do, I know our seniors, some of our seniors have always expressed to me, come this time of year, they don't like to drive after dark, so, so one for, I think it would give a good chance for everyone to participate. So, it'd be an afternoon and an evening, I think, would be fair, or tend to be fair to everybody.
So, I know 21 days puts us at the 29th, but I'm going to suggest we bump it to October 1st, which is Wednesday.
Yep.
Simply because the 30th is a holiday, and sometimes that makes it more challenging if people are taking a longer weekend, whether they've got kids in school or whatever is what I'm thinking, it makes it, it does give people a chance to be back home if we put it off till the day after the holiday, if that makes sense. Is that, are we okay with that? So, October 1st for information sessions?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to that effect.
Oh.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, unfortunately, I won't be available that day. It is possible Xander will be available, but he's, I would have to double-check with him to make sure you just have a planner on, like, hand for that day.
Would the second work for you?
It's actually those few days I'll just be away, unfortunately, so I have some prior engagement for the, between the first and the third there.
The information session doesn't have to be 21 days, though, does it?
No, that's right.
So, we could do the information session on the 24th, and have the notice of objection before our council meeting on the 6th, technically. Okay.
What, where do they need to use for the information session, because the chambers is booked for the 24th and 25th?
Okay. So, apparently, we, no, that I'd rather know now than later. So, what about the 23rd?
Yep.
23rd? Oh, no, we have a meeting here the evening of the 23rd. Okay, we just can't do it in the month of September, apparently, there's no available dates. Yeah.
Madam Mayor, maybe if ever...
Why don't we refer to staff for an information session? Okay. Yeah, we'll consult with, and make sure that we can find a planner, and come up with the time to do an information session. Some time that the room is available, and the planners are available simultaneously. Okay. So, there's that one. Do we want to do, we have to set a date for the public hearing of objections?
Maybe the next week after October 1st, Madam Mayor, so maybe the 8th would be suitable for all, everybody involved?
Yep.
Okay. Well, Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion for that a factor for October the 8th, for the public hearings.
Alex, do we need to read that motion that says about council in compliance with Section 111 of the Community Planning Act, and sets the date and time, and the location for that? Do we need to read that?
As long as, as long as you do it in compliance of the act, that's the main thing. And as Council Sturgeon said, 21 days, if you've given the web notice, that many days, you're in compliance with that section of the act.
So, we have a motion from Council Sturgeon to have the public hearing of objections on October the 8th. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. And then, our final thing would be the first reading of the bylaw in name only. Can we do that tonight, or do we have to advertise that first? We can do it tonight?
Madam Mayor, you can do this by title only. The Local Governance Act would require you to read it in its entirety at least once, unless you put it on your website for a period of so many days. And if you advertise the bylaw with the public hearing, that's going to satisfy that Local Governance Act clause. So, no one ever reads these things in their entirety, because it would take about three to four hours.
I think we would all support that type of concept.
That's what we did last time.
It's, yeah. All right, so, would somebody like to make a motion? Here's what I'm going to suggest on this one. Let's table this until after closed session, and we'll regroup with a motion when we come out of that, so we'll have the proper wording and the proper number. Is that fair? Would somebody like to thank you?
I'll make a motion to table that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council Sturgeon. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by Council Green Law. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Thank you, Alex.
You're welcome.
All right. Item number 17 is approval to pay the following invoices. 17-1 from the General Operating Fund. Dexter Machining Limited, DTI for leaf blowers, $2,458.68. Dutchman Contracting for the Wharf Cleanup, $40,543.25. Island Home Hardware, the August Statement is $4,662.31. Roadway Traffic Supplies, DTI for the road signs, is $1,573.20. Troy Life and Fire Safety Limited for deficiency work, $2,804.85. And Yulon Canada Corp. for market tables, $3,621.53.
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion to pay the invoices of the General Operating Fund.
You heard the motion from Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by Council Valentine. Question? Council Green?
What was Troy Life's deficiency work?
Worked to the sprinkler system. There was a list of deficiencies that the fire marshal found, that they were fixing up.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. From the General Capital Fund, Lindsay Construction Progress Claim Number 11, $114,563.48.
I move that we pay that invoice from the General Capital Fund.
You heard the motion from Council Valentine. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by Council Green Law. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. And then, 18-1 is a transfer, it's a motion to transfer $1,700,350.78 from the airport line of credit to the General Capital Fund.
I'd make that motion.
Heard the motion from Council Green Law. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Council Turner. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Closed session, we have two things. One is property for the dangerous and unsightly premises, and then, two was the Planning Advisory Committee members that we moved into closed session a short while ago.
Make a motion that we move into closed session?
You heard the motion from Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by Council Valentine. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? I recall this regular council meeting of the Village of Grammonan to order, we were in closed session to talk about two items. 19-1 was property, dangerous or unsightly premises.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to enforce the order to comply to PID 01294859 issued on June the 25th of 2025.
You heard the motion from Council Sturgeon. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by Council Turner. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 19-2 was to replace a member of the PAC.
I move that we approach the first preference, and if he or she is not willing to accept, we approach the second preference.
You heard the motion from Council Valentine. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. And then, we had deferred the item number 16-1, the rural plan bylaw motion, till we got the proper wording.
Be resolved that the Village of Grammonan Council give first reading by title to the rural plan dated September 25th, shall be numbered, which shall be numbered as bylaw 5825.
You heard the motion from Council Green Law. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by Council Valentine. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. We're working on a date for the information session, that will be up on our Facebook page once we have confirmed that. So, our next regular council meeting will be here on October the 6th at 7:30 PM.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much. Thanks, everybody.